So we're gonna be back with on the screen again.
Good evening. This work in this presentation, what this presentation focuses on the work of our graduation coaches, and we first want to just explain how the graduation coaches became to exist. Governor produced creative statewide approach to address Georgia's high dropout rate included placement of a graduation coach in all Georgia high schools in the fall of 2006. Graduation coaches were charged with the sole responsibility which was to identify, which was and is today, to identify and serve students who are at risk of dropping out of high school. Since then, we've had a gradual increase in the graduation rate in the state of Georgia as well as in the Newton County school system.
Right here on this slide, you're gonna see data reflecting the graduation rate in Newton County, and also a column in parentheses for the AMO, which is the state's measurable objective for graduation rates. You can see since 2006, the graduation rate in Newton County has increased, but so have the expectations by the state. And so this is the results, this is the data that shows the work of our schools and also the graduation coach to foster that. But it's also a dynamic position because the graduation rates, as depicted in this slide, will be calculated differently beginning with this school year. So the work of the graduation coaches is dynamic and still changing. The new cohort graduation rate will cause what is anticipated a 10% drop in the graduation rate. Previously, the graduation rate was calculated by the number of students that were entering their senior year and finished the senior year with a graduation. This new cohort graduation will look at students that began in a freshman year and finished in four years to graduate. And so it's a dynamic position and this is, we have the lever versus the cohort.
So if they go to another system in grade, at the end of grade 10, do they damage our cohort grad rate?
We haven't, I haven't received a particular information about that. I do believe once they leave our system, they are not, they are not accountable on us. We, I believe it will be the seniors-
But they entered at grade nine.
Correct, but they're gonna, as long as they move to another system, I believe that they will become the responsibility of the receiving system. So we would be responsible for anybody that entered as a ninth grader, whether they entered in Eastside or Alcovee-
And it's still there at the end.
Or Newton, whoever's there at the end.
Okay.
And we also want to inform everyone that this is a changing process, it's an evolving process. We're continually weekly, monthly, on a monthly basis, getting new information in regards to the cohort graduation rate.
Which the AMO for that graduation rate hasn't been set yet.
Right.
So that is still a little bit of vagueness from the state.
With the transition from the block schedule to the seven-period day, we've had the opportunity to implement the acadets and instructional focus period. On this slide, you see some of the support services that we're able to offer our students during the school day. I don't wanna read each and every bubble, but you, I do wanna highlight just a few. All of them are important, I do want to mention that. Each one of our bubbles are very, very important because they provide a different service to our students. I do wanna highlight just a few. The SAT and ACT review help us to ensure that our students are college and career-ready. We use that time to focus on skills that our students will need as they graduate from high school and enter college or the workforce. Our AP lounges are for our students who are participating in advanced placement classes. This is an opportunity where the advanced placement student who is on a college track can get extra assistance from their teacher during the school day. I also want to focus on credit recovery. Credit recovery is for the student who somewhere along the way has missed some credit, whether it's due to illness. They, this may be a student that has experienced some form of illness that has caused him or her to miss a grave amount of school. It may be a student who has experienced quite a few discipline problems, so this may be a student who has experienced quite a few suspensions that have caused him or her to be out of school. There are different reasons why a student may not get the credit that they should in a given time period. So this is, this is an opportunity for students who are missing credit to try to catch this student up so that he or she can graduate one time. It's also an opportunity for the instructional focus period. The instructional focus period is an opportunity for students to gain extra assistance in the four content areas during the school day. We know that in Newton County, transportation services continue to be a concern. For instance, Alcovee is a great example in its location. We have students that live as far as 20 miles away, and it puts a strain on a student, on a parent, who may work in downtown Atlanta or a parent that may work in Alpharetta that cannot get to Highway 36 to pick up their child by 5 o'clock. So this is an opportunity where the student can gain extra assistance during the school day while we have him or her at our, at school, under our care. We can provide some extra assistance to them. So these are the different services that we're able to provide. One service that we do not have listed here that we're able to provide and that we've able, we've been, we've actually mandated for our students and our teachers as recently as this week is silent sustained reading. Where there, there's a focused and structured time during the school day where teachers and students are participating in 30 minutes of silent sustained reading, and we know what the research says about students who spend a structured and focused time reading and writing every single day.
And so the big thing that we want you to realize is that the role of our graduation coaches really serves as a bridge to match the time that is available during the instructional focus time to match the student with the service. And that's the, that's the key role of the graduation coaches right now is to take all those many different things that you saw in the bubble, on the bubble there, and match the student with the appropriate service that will get that student closer to graduating. I'm sorry, let me slide forward.
Again, the acadets and instructional focus time is a specific time embedded in the school day where students can receive extra remediation interventions. They can recover credit and help the students to fulfill graduation requirements to enhance their college and career readiness skills. The key, as Mr. Cher has just stated, is to match the right personnel with the right student during the right time of day. This is just a visual for all of us in regards to the organizational structure that we use to place our students. Where a student is placed in regards to acadets and instructional focus on the first day of school may change. This is an evolving process. We use several pieces of student achievement data in order to place our students. We use data from the end-of-course test, from end-of-course tests. We use data from the Georgia High School graduation test, and of course, we know that we are starting to benchmark our students on the high school level in Newton County. All of our high school students completed benchmarks in the four content areas as recently as last week. That data is coming in as we speak. We'll look at that data, we'll analyze it, we'll make sure our students are where they need to be for instructional focus and acadets. If they're not, we'll change them. So this is a process that continues to change. This is just a visual for all of us in regards to how we organize this process. Students can change their placement three, four times during the school year. We try to organize it around the nine-week grading periods.
Okay.
One thing I wanna talk about, like Dr. Carpenter mentioned earlier, is credit recovery. In previous years, we had a difficult time providing opportunities for credit recovery to students because we couldn't get them before school or after school. The acadets and instructional focus time allows us to capture that student during school and provide them opportunities to recover credit in an accelerated manner for any class that they did not receive credit for previously failing. And again, the coordinating that our graduation coach plays a very vital role in making sure that those students are properly identified as well as into the appropriate locations. Because as we, we talk about the dynamic, the dynamic nature of the graduation coach, also the graduation requirements that are on these students changes. Beyond the seven-period day, which caused a little bit of different graduation requirements and the acquisition of credits for students, we also have the new graduation rules coming from the state for our incoming freshmen. So each grade level, each set of students has a different requirement they have to fulfill in order to graduate. And our graduation coach is a key role in making sure that the students meet their needs in order to graduate on time.
Again, instructional focus is a time where we're able to provide remediation and reteaching in the four content areas. I mentioned the different points of data that we use to place our students. We also want to mention that we utilize our teachers in recommending students for placement. Students can self-refer, refer themselves. We do allow our students to have a voice in the teaching and learning process. So if a student meets with his or her counselor, meets with our graduation coach, and seeks out extra assistance, of course, we take that request into consideration as well as parent recommendations.
And the, the system that we've developed with our graduation coaches has allowed us to be flexible to meet the needs of these target areas in the core academics beyond, we also have, as Dr. Carpenter has explained, we're able to meet the needs of ACT and SAT preparation, credit recovery, but also in these tutoring areas so that as these benchmark results come back that she alluded to, we can identify areas of weakness and target those areas because we, as a school, want our students to graduate, and we also wanna make AYP. And then these coaches have been essential to meeting above those areas.
Go back to the slide, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just want, I just wanna mention the previous slide that, this slide. These, we offer tutoring services in these courses. We have the eight end-of-course test courses listed here. So eight of the courses that you see, students have to take and pass the end-of-course assessment, as well as Math 3 and Math 4 is also listed in regards to students gaining extra assistance. And in, in informing you of that, it's important to note that the end-of-course test may be used and will be used. We're, of course, getting new information daily, but will be used in the AYP calculation process. These are additional interventions that we may have not mentioned, but we wanted to make sure we highlighted for you in regards to our graduation coaches organizing these support services for our students. Attendance Intervention Group is for students who have some difficulty in arriving to school on time, students who have difficulty in staying at school for the entire school day, as well as students coming to school in general. The Study Skills Support Group, this is also an opportunity for us to involve our parents more in the process of teaching and learning our, in our, for our high school students. Providing a structured time for parent conferences is very important for high schools, for high school students. The Team Parent Group is another resource that we're able to provide for our students. The Peer Mentoring Group, the ACT/SAT Review Courses, as well as the End-of-Course Test and Georgia High School Test Graduation Review. And of course, we always want to focus on the three Rs, rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our graduation coaches really do a phenomenal job in helping us to help our teachers build the rigor, infuse the level of high expectations that we have for all students. We do believe that all students can excel at high levels. Ensuring that the curriculum and the instruction is relevant, helping our students to provide connections with the information that they're learning in the classroom, the content that they're learning in the classroom, to what goes on outside of the high school environment. And of course, building relationships. We know that students who have a connection with an adult in the high school, in the school motivates that student to come back the next day. And so that's very, very important. When students can put a name and a face with an adult, with their teachers as well as an adult that's not necessarily assigned to them, but when they know that there are caring adults in the building who believe in their success and believe in their ability, they're motivated to continue to come back the next day.
And the word picture I can give you that I would best define how our graduation coaches are utilized is the bridge. When we, when we deal with students as administrators, we deal with providing the proper services and opportunities for students to be successful. And you've seen all those services and opportunities that are, that are available to our students. Our counselors, they typically deal with the students on an individual level, dealing with the growth of the student, the, making sure the student's placed in an appropriate course and that they, their needs as a learner are met. The graduation coach is the one that bridges the gap between the student and the services, making sure that each student has what they need in order to graduate, the appropriate services that they have. And it really is served as a, for us, as a great mediator between those two to make sure that we have the proper services and that the right students are receiving those services throughout the school.
And I would just like to thank the graduation coaches because they really work very hard. They put a lot of legwork in, into ensuring that our students have all that they need and gain all that they need when they, when they enter our high schools because we know that for the high school student, it's more than just going to the classroom, being taught a skill, and leaving. It's also, it's so much more. The high school experience is the last opportunity that we as a school system have to in, you know, ensure that our students leave us and become successful and can, become successful, caring adults who can contribute to our community. So I do want to publicly thank the work that the graduation coaches do because we could not do this work without them. We were told not to ask you, but we have to ask you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
I have one who told you that.
Let me ask this first one.
Go ahead.
Who told you not to ask the question?
I said it first.
I can't say.
I do, I wanna ask you because when Union Grove presented this model to us earlier in the year, it had to have been before March 8th when we made those cuts. What I'm gonna ask is kinda based on what was presented to me there. And if we look at the possibility of the College and Career Ready Performance Index, Jeff, and you talk a lot about the cohort grad rate, about which we've heard for a couple of years, maybe more, the, the, the critical nature of this role to transition to college, and here's what I heard, and I quote, as you described this position, vital role, dynamic. Essential to AYP, caring adult, they build rigor, play key role for graduation on time, each student has a unique person to go to. Continues on and on, you know, they match the right student with the right personnel. And to me, it sounds administrative. Are we given the correct support as a system to this role? If, if we are serious about the transition to college or to technical colleges, if we're serious about cohort grad rate, which I guess may be a second indicator in AYP, I don't know what they're gonna come up with, but I asked the folks that are doing it, are we?
I think it's a loaded question, but I do think it's a great opportunity. Seriously, I do think it's a great opportunity for the graduation coaches to speak up for themselves in regards to the type of support that they need. You may not have this opportunity to answer this question again, so if there are additional resources or support that you need to do your work, this is-
Can I, can I interrupt real quick? Sherry, would you wanna turn the lights on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because, and, and this is also within the context, when we made cuts in March 8th, in my opinion, and others have heard this, and they're weary of it, but it's okay. You know, in the high schools, we moved to seven-period day. We integrated the IF. We removed assistant principals from two schools.
We did.
We had quite a few changes, and this role has, to me, been transformed from what I saw years ago. And yet, when you show me the data, even before we've come on with the IF period, when you show me that chart, in this system where grad rate, even the lever rate has improved from the 60% to 80-something, which in some cases may be at or above the state, I'm not sure. That's why I wanna hear from folks. And I'm not hearing anything.
Well, while they think, can I-
Supported a wide range of questions.
Right.
What type of support are you referring to?
I don't know. I just, I just want, this seems like a mammoth duty.
It is.
And if, and if every, if, the quotes I'm hearing, you know, the nature of the grad, the dynamic nature, they match the student with the right personnel, this, this role is critical to AYP, to the transition to college, to the potential acceptance of CCRPI. It's a critical role.
In our case, I can only speak for our case, without our graduation coach doing the job that she does, and obviously, Mr. Cher does a wonderful job of helping, support, and oversee this, but we could not function and do the IF, supervise children, and keep the rest of the programs going during that acadets period without her or without that, that particular position.
We echo the same statement at Newton High. Our graduation coach helps fill in the void from the assistant principal that we did lose. They, they are actually indispensable to us at this time.
And I would also-
So it does become administrative in a, you know, de facto, you know?
There were three things when they, they presented, the three people that they deemed as critical or essential in making the transition at this time, was a, a strong counselor that the Union Grove had, a strong AP that Union Grove had, and a graduation coach. And those were the three things. And that's why, when I give you the word picture of the bridge, the counselor still deals with the individual students, and the administrator deals, still organizes and creates services and makes sure the personnel are meeting those services, but it's that graduation coach that, that makes sure that the students are getting there.
Makes it all connect.
Then I go back to the original question. Are we doing, are we giving sufficient support, human resources or other, to the position? Are we allocating the right resources given the value of the role?
No, we are not. I can speak for Alcovee. I, my graduation coach really can work from sunup to sundown strictly on acadets and instructional focus if he chose to. He puts in a lot of legwork, as I mentioned before. It's very easy for the grad, for this work to occur the way that it should occur. The graduation coach really could put in 16, 18-hour days easily. The assistant principal and the principal really, we, yes, we provide support, we provide the resources that we can. I would also like to mention that we do need that other assistant principal that we lost. I mean, having 2000, close to 2000-
I've seen the need.
There, there is a need. There's a grave need for this work to be done because I will tell you, it's not perfect.
I've gone for me in there.
I strive for perfection. I am not perfect. I'm not a perfect principal neither.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I do strive for perfection, and it is very difficult to strive for perfection when you lose staff. It's very difficult to do, and the work is a mammoth task. It really, really is because the needs of the high school student are very mammoth. They really, really are. Students come to school with emotional needs, they come to school with psychological needs. Of course, yes, they do have instructional needs that, and that's, that is our work, but we cannot teach a child to learn how to read, to perfect their reading skills, perfect their math skills if they're hungry, if, you know, they're experiencing a life-changing situation such as pregnancy or whatever, you know, other situations that they do deal with. We do have, we have students that comes, that enter our doors who have different illnesses such as asthma, diabetes. There are different illnesses that plague our student population. There are different needs of, every single student that walks in Alcovee, we have 1,900 and more students, and all 1,904 have a different need.
Right.
And so it's, your question at, focused on support, are we providing the right support to ensure that this work is being done correctly and as perfect as possible? My, my answer would be no.
And what would that look like if we were to be able to do that in the future? What would that support look like?
That's a great question. We would have, I, I would even beg to differ that we would need two graduation coaches in the high school.
I agree with that.
I would, I would say that we need the, we all, we, we need an additional assistant principal, we do. We need more resources in regards, resources that can help our students focus on college and career readiness skills. We've done a great job in, in improving the technology infrastructure in our schools and in our school system, but there is more work to be done in regards to increasing technology such as an increase of, in, in active boards. Because that's a tool that our, our, our teachers and our students interface with the active boards daily and constantly, and it just improves and enhances the instructional process. I don't know if I'm leaving any resources out, but those are the resources that I can mention at this time that would assist us.
I would also add that we would like to consider a more competitive salary because we have three dynamic people, and I'm afraid I'm gonna lose mine over time if I'm not able to compensate.
Are they paid, are they paid on certificate level at present?
They're paid as a beginning teacher, I believe.
So it's not-
Because it was originally a state position.
So that was my question, is what's the qualifications to be a graduation coach? I mean, because if they're paid on a beginning salary, but a, after this presentation, and I, I went to Eastside and followed Ms. Gregory around the other day just to get a better understanding of what they do.
I bet you were tired.
And I, I, it blew me away. And I've got an education, I mean, I, I've got a degree. I'm, I could, but I couldn't do what she does because I don't understand all the stuff that y'all have to go through.
The, the job descriptions, they vary widely. In some counties, you don't have to have a college degree. Other counties require a college degree, and that college degree can be in a variety of different majors, sociology, psychology, and so forth.
Let's get the answer to the question from the State Department's perspective. The State Department is clear that the graduation coach, as best I can remember from HR, only has to be eligible for a professional certificate, even that of a parapro. So that would mean two years of college at the most for a parapro certificate. Is that still correct?
That's, yes.
I'm almost positive that's correct. So with that being said, that's where you can be to be a graduation coach. In addition, this, we gotta understand the history of this program. The state-funded graduation coaches in each of our middle schools and high schools when the pro, when the program was in seed, and they gave it to us at a rate of $40,000 per position. That, those were the funds that were passed down from the state. Well, during those times, I think this program came in around 2006, if I'm not mistaken. Well, we were, we hadn't seen the financial bubble burst, so when I came to the district as the district's HR person, we were paying them based on their certification and their years of experience, no different than a regular classroom teacher. Although the funding coming from the state was only to the tune of $40,000. So when we started looking at the first years of making budget cuts, we said, the first place we wanna look to make cuts are in those places where we're expending more than what the state provides. And the first place that came into play was with our graduation coaches. Very, very similar to what went on in pre-K.
Pre-K.
We gave those teachers that were serving graduation coach roles the opportunity to go into a classroom and teach and maintain their salaries. And then we brought in new graduation coaches at what we called a beginning teacher rate that was somewhere around $32,000, $34,000. And then those other dollars making up salary and benefit, benefits, I'm sorry, and that type of thing would amount to somewhere around the $40,000 we're getting from the state, a few dollars more when you combine the program. So that's what we're doing now. Now, this school term, given the IF and the need to bring in instructional focus and to change our schedule, we went to a model that gave them 20 more days of work, if I'm not mistaken.
10.
10, 10 days, okay? I wanna make, get that correct.
Total 12.
Total of 12 days of additional work. So what they're doing is based on their current salary, they're now being paid for and working 12 additional days. So that's where we are with salary graduation coaches. So they're some of the only people in the system that received any type of increase during these austere times, but it is for days' work. They were allowed to work additional days, and that was approved by y'all as a school board. So that's all the background on graduation coaches, just wanted to give you that.
Do you think that a carpenter with the seeming change of duties and roles and, and possible importance placed upon all of these things with cohort, with what Vargis presented as a waiver, you know, because they seem like registrars, they seem like counselors, they seem like academicians, they seem like a blend, it seemed like something that's hard to describe, but if you use that PowerPoint as a job description, that doesn't seem like, I go, I go back to what you said, Dr. Lockhart, it seems like something doesn't make sense with salary to me.
Well-
And I don't know what they are, to be honest. It just seems, you must know that there's a mismatch.
Yeah, well, if I were to look at a job description, I would say all other duties. That's what they do. They do everything. You are, you are getting to that point. But they, they wear many, many hats, and everything is directly tied to our success with AYP.
But I, I would like to say, make a compliment, not make a comment, that I am very pleased that it was decided that you come and make this presentation. I've been on this board three years, I believe, and I, I just almost came to the conclusion that where have, I wanna say you guys, but I didn't wanna exclude you. Ben, I find a void in the leaders of the building not coming forth with your shopping list, that's the only way I call. Where have you been? I mean, this is the first dialogue in three years that I've had the principal come up and say, this is what we want. This is what we need. We are out there educating our kids, and you guys, whoever, are not doing it. This is what we want. It's, I am so happy that you, whoever thought of this one, I, I'm gonna do what the next one is anyway because I think it's a great idea. And why, where have you been, may I ask?
We've been working.
I, I, I hear that.
That's the answer.
I, I, I believe you. Don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong.
I have a-
All that's been going on, I think everybody's been busy, but I think what's brought it to a head, to me as an old-timer, is the fact that we are, we have gone through- to a head, to me as an old timer, is the fact that we are, we have gone through this change in scheduling, which has been a massive change, especially through Eastside. The other schools unfortunately have had to go back and forth. But with us, teachers who were just so tied and dead into the rights of a ninety minute period, that it's taken us a while now to get adjusted. We had this timeframe. And one of the selling points that we wanted to make sure that our people, you know, Dr. Matthews put it out, he wants us to sell this because of the fact it is important that we have an instructional focus down during the middle of the day.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, but I, I, I want to try to make it a little personal because I have been making decisions here. And guess what?
Yes.
Those people was not in my decision-making. They were absent. And that's unfortunate. And I've been here three years. Yes, we've been downsizing, but the value of them has never been expressed like this. Is that my fault?
No, it's probably. What you heard, what you heard over and over those years.
Yeah.
This is, this has been a change.
Okay. Well, I, I don't want to preach, but I'm, I'm very happy that you showed up and it has made an impact on me, how I view the value of this particular function.
Well, I have a question for, and this is to all the principals and the graduating coaches from each, each high school.
And we have three assistant principals.
And everybody. And that is, we have discussed in some our hearings that we've had, and one of the things that really grabbed me is the credit recovery. And I think that we have not done a good job in assisting in credit recovery. And the reason I say that is because we have had hearings where children have been disciplined. And it was unfortunate that the only way they could receive their credit recovery is to go to SHARP. And we have discussed that a lot. So I have a vested interest to make sure that when we start talking about our graduating wait rates and our students passing AYP, if we don't give these kids an opportunity to reach their full potentials, then they're going to become bored. And they're going to drop out of school. Along with the fact that the, the career academy that we're implementing now, I think we're on the right path in creating an environment of our county that people, along with the citizens here, can be very proud of. But I, I hope, and I agree with Mr. Johnson, that we should continue to have input from the people who are there on the road with their foot and hands in the dirt doing the job. Because you guys know what it's going to take and bring this information to us. And so that we can discuss it and make valid educational decisions in giving you guys what you need in order to perform your duties. And so, I think that this is what we should really start doing because it's very easy for me to sit here or somewhere else and make a decision. Could be very, very skewed because I have no real idea in some instances what it takes to do your job. So I think it's good for you to share that and, and make, Dr. Matthews, Dr. Carpenter, all others who are sitting in the office, make them aware what you guys need to do your job. And this is not to blame anybody. I think it's very good dialogue for us to have in order for us to move our system in a direction that needs to be moved.
Well, Mr. Turner, when you look at this.
I have some questions. I'm waiting on all of you.
Okay.
I hope they're not for me. I'm going to take my seat. But I, I just want to be clear in that we do care the concerns of the schools as we hear them in department. I understand. No, I'm not arguing that point. But what I'm saying is, we went through a budgetary process that was very, very difficult to cut eight point two million dollars. We went through a survey. I can remember being in the same room and me and a couple others saying, I don't see how in the world you cut an AP from a two thousand student school. And I had that dialogue with each person on the board. I made that comment. I made it to the superintendent. I made it to the ELT. So I just want this body as a whole to understand, when we feel very passionate and very strongly about something, we bring it to the table, but ultimately the decision is made. Now, with the graduation coaches, do I think they're phenomenal? Do I think they fill a void in the school system? Yes. Very, very key void. But as the deputy superintendent for operations responsible for human resources, I will say that it's very, very difficult to look at one group of employees in isolation during a time where everybody's seeing diminishing returns. And when you look at one group in isolation, when other folks have the same level of expectation with less, it's kind of difficult to do that in the name of being fair from an HR standpoint.
Right.
That's just one other avenue, not to say that it's.
And that, and that's why I've mentioned that, that not just the graduation coach.
Yes.
I'm speaking of all people who are in the system doing the job that sometimes, you know, and I'm in management myself, but sometimes we fail to listen to the people who are there doing the job. This, this was not to throw blame on anybody. This is just just.
But if they're not, if they're not paid on their cert, certification level, then they're, then they're not equal to the current workforce. Because if they're, if we have certified folks and they're in the field and certified in this particular field grade level, they would be paid based on that certificate. Am I right?
Well, no, sir.
And these positions are not, are apparently not the.
They're not, they're not, there's not a required certification. You can take a paraprofessional with a paraprofessional certificate. In a lot of cases, systems, that's the case. And they can serve as your graduation coach.
Okay.
But now we believe that the, the pay needs to be weighted. I think that's a conversation looked at with, across the board in terms of is it the appropriate salary?
But I think the pay probably is not. It is a concern, don't get me wrong. But I think when you look at how, how pay scale is set up, we have to be fair and equitable to all other employees.
Yes.
Because if this pay requires this amount of money, it may not be a, a need to increase pay per se, but give them the necessary manpower to do the job. You understand what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. I, I agree. I, I get it. My question is, are there any other positions in the school system that are just based on that first year teacher salary such as theirs? Is there anything comparable in, in another department, in special ed, in, in elementaries or anything like that? Or is this just?
I wouldn't say that anything is comparable. What I would say is that that's the pay scale for that job, no different than pay scales for other jobs.
So if we wanted to change it?
Oh, yeah. It's nothing's concrete.
We could go.
You change them all.
I know, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we could go back and revise that if we decided that this was something we needed.
Well, let me, let me ask this question.
Absolutely.
Let me ask you this question here. This is for you, Dr. Matthews, Dr. Carpenter. I'm just brainstorming here. Due to the fact that we have different operating guidelines that we have to go on based on budgets, we have cuts. Have we done a system-wide analysis of what we requiring people to do to do some adjusting here and there to make sure that we're getting the most out of our people with the money that we have to spend? Have we?
You mean like a compensation?
If you're talking about a salary analysis?
No, no, not just salary. I'm, I'm speaking of jobs people do, where our money's spent to see if we can move people around to do an adjustment. Because we, we're wanting to operate.
Yes.
In the same fashion if we had the same amount of money that we had four or five years ago.
The two things that are coming to my mind are systematic salary study or a reorganization. And to answer that, we have not had a system-wide salary study since I came here. I think we had one in about oh-six. And I've looked at the document. It was prior to my arrival. And in terms of reorganization, we did a systematic reorganization in the operations department that the board looked at and approved. And we made some cuts and developed a structure that we've been able to operate during these austere times. I don't think the same systematic thing happened in the CIT department.
But do you think, do you, Dr. Matthews and you, Dr. Carpenter, you think that would be something that we need to look at, at how we do?
You can find that for everybody though. Look at Samantha and Kim.
I'm speaking of, I'm speaking of the whole system.
The whole system, yeah.
The whole system.
I'd be interested.
Salary studies, one issue Dennis pointed out. We haven't done that in the school system in a while. I suspect we, we haven't because of the austere times that we're in. We've been in a budget reduction mode, not a budget increase mode. So I understand why that hasn't happened. In terms of any kind of time in motion study as to what jobs are needed and how can, how they can be done most effectively and the like, typically that's outside even of the expertise of a lot of HR departments. And those things are typically contracted out to consultants to bring that kind of study back. I will say this, and, and is why I think it's almost somewhat of a nebulous point. When you look at the central office staff here for operations as well as for curriculum instruction technology, I think the number's something like twenty-five, twenty-six administrators. I forgot the exact number. It's less than thirty. In a school system that's nineteen thousand students, I can tell you that is woefully short. Woefully short. I've said that more than once. But the problem is, and the challenge is, if you're adding administration at a time when we are cutting, for example, forty-seven high school teachers, that's a very tough sale on many, many levels. So you do the best you can with the personnel that you have. And I want to commend here tonight, for example, both Dr. Proctor and Ms. Fury, who necessarily have to work with teacher experts in carrying out a lot of the work in curriculum instruction, for among the reasons is they have no other choice. Now, that's a pretty good choice, teacher experts. But typically in a school system this size, you'd have a coordinator for social studies, science, language arts, foreign language, right on down the line, arts, PE. We do not have that. There are many districts, not even, not even half our size, who have all of that. But that's not where we are now. And I don't think we can get there without further harming where the work, where the rubber does meet the road. And that is at the teacher level and at the schoolhouse level. So let me, let me capture this just quickly and not belabor it too much. Because it's the real deal. And I like to, I like to work in the, in the real deal. At the end of school year two thousand twelve, thirteen, I think there is a high probability that we'll be making multi-million dollar cuts. I don't know whether that would be two million or four and a half million. Let's hope that local, state, and federal revenue surprises us into the local type, local tax digest despite the current prognosis that foreclosures will continue to escalate here locally even, will not come true. And that the economy locally will really pick up. And the tax assessor will have some really good news in Newton County, which is one of the top twenty most negatively impacted counties in the United States. That's where we live. Let's hope that at the state level, that QBE comes in much stronger than what we've seen in the past. And maybe we get another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars unexpected. Let's hope that happens, that the state of Georgia's able to do that. I don't really expect more from the feds. I don't think you'll see another stimulus vis-à-vis the public schools, given the disposition of the US House of Representatives. I don't think you'd expect relief from the feds. Let's hope Georgia does better. Locally, I think it's suspect. But in any case, adding at a time when it looks to me like we will be subtracting to some degree at the end of twelve, thirteen, just seems problematic altogether. I hope I'm wrong on that and that we'll be back to a posture to where we can at least stay even. But right now, at the end of thirteen, fourteen, we're looking at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars as projected ending fund balance. That's not even a day's operating expense. We, we've got to physically manage the, the work of the school system. And, 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 and every talk of additional personnel and the like is a huge challenge for us. I mean, just today, for example, a meeting at the theme school, we thought we would have probably an estimated, I think in our chart that you saw yesterday, five additional new teachers. We think now it might be as many as ten. Additionally, we, we, we're going to have some expenses that are going to crop up that we're going to have to bear, whether we like it or not. So I'm, I'm reluctant to engage in a lot of serious thought about additional personnel, additional pay increases for this or that category. Because I promise you, there's a long line of people who could be in this room who do very important work in the school system and who have, who would have a tremendous advocacy for the work they do and would have a good case to make. These graduation coaches are just one prime example. They're outstanding. I think they're indispensable to the work. But they are part of a big picture now that is, that is the Newton County school system. So that's just my comment.
You know, I, I agree with you, Dr. Matthews, as far as our funding and the budgets. However, if we want our system, we can't maybe can't, the point I was trying to make is the fact that I know we may not be able to give big raises and things of this nature. But if we want and expect our system to perform at a certain level, then if we don't provide the necessary tools and other things for them to perform at that level, we're setting them up for failure.
Here's the point I would make. I, I, I see your point. But here, here, here's the point I would offer in response to very excellent observation, Mr. Chairman. Given our fiscal posture, the budgetary posture of our public school system, and I've said this before, in order for this board ultimately to start doing something like additional support for this or that function, ultimately, I think you're going to have to look at stop doing something else or amend something else to find savings. Because again, the end of two thousand twelve, thirteen is sooner than you think. And I think right now, just looking at the projected bottom lines, even if there wasn't a hundred and ninety thousand dollars sitting there, and there was a million dollars sitting there.
That's fourteen. That's fiscal fourteen.
Right, right. But, but it, but it's at the end of twelve, thirteen, that you're going to have to prepare a budget in, going into thirteen, fourteen. Because if you don't do that, in thirteen, fourteen, you're living on the edge. You could, I mean, incon, not inconceivably, you could end in the red. You could end the fund balance in the red at thirteen, fourteen unless you did something at the end of twelve, thirteen. I'm hoping not. I hope that's not the prognosis. But I'm just looking at the numbers.
Well, I, I, I understand that as well. As Mr. Turner said, I like, I don't like to shut down exploration or conversation or possibilities. I, I'm not proposing one penny. I'm proposing that we hear and we explore, we listen to these principals and administrators and grad coaches. And I mean, and, and I am painfully and caught, clearly aware of fiscal fourteen. I see those numbers. I looked at them yesterday up here and I see them in my head right now. And I think we all do. And I don't think any of us would, would, would want to put the system in, in a situation that would be problematic. However, and I know this isn't typical, but there was over four million that we didn't know we had this, we were four million off this year. In terms of what we thought we didn't have, we had more. Okay? I'm not saying that means you spend it. I'm not, I mean, what we worked, what we did yesterday was less than ten percent of the eight point two some odd million cuts we made on March eighth. I, 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 I don't want to shut down the, the ideas, the generation of ideas about what may, we may need or what, what could be possible with, with a, with, and I know it's, it's necessary with this constant, you know, you know, forecast that's doom and dismal. I under, I know that forecast and I do, I do get it and understand it. But I mean, there's a, there's a lot of energy and things happening in these schools. And, and, and I want to hear those ideas, even though it's something we may not be able to act on all the time.
I'm, I'm all for the idea generation, solicitation, expression. In fact, we do that rather regularly in the various meetings around the school system. But at the end of the day, the fiscal stability of the school system is indispensable to the educability of the children that we serve. So I have to keep my eye on that. And I have to remind us of where we are, frankly, sooner than later. I'd be remiss not to do that. And so I have to be very realistic in looking at what the, the data show us. Now, I'll, I'll be redundant and suggest that I sure hope that the current prognosis is wrong. That the tax digest locally is much stronger than anyone thinks. That we save an unexpected three more, three million dollars more going forward. That, that the state really picks things up. But even as I look at the most rosy of scenarios in doing this for twenty years, and looking at some of the additions that I know we're going to be proposing, additions to the budget, I don't know that we can escape at the end of twelve, thirteen, some level of cuts again. And yeah, that's not, that's not a, a great rosy picture. But there is tremendous work going on in the school system despite that.
Let me make sure I, everybody having to understand what I'm saying here. I understand. I think everybody's in agreement as to where we're headed with our budget, that we, we don't look good in our budget.
I see the chart.
However, I still feel that although we have some shortcomings in our budget, we just don't need to just sit back and look at ways to cut. We need to be looking at better ways of doing things with the money that we have. That's, that's.
Even reorganized.
Well, if we don't do something, we'll lose our teachers. Just like Dr. Lockhart said, we may lose these graduation coaches.
That's where I begin.
It's not just graduation coaches. It's teachers. It's not just graduation coaches, it's teachers, it's other people and other persons.
And, you know, we just, right. I think it's just something that we need to really focus on, continue to assess how we do things because we're having less money, you know, each year. And that's all I'm saying, everybody understands about the budget. We're concerned about the budget, but we're saying to look at how we do things, and are we getting the best for our buck and making sure people do it.
And, Mr. Chairman, that is a continuous, ongoing discussion and dialogue in our school system. In almost every meeting that I attend, that's what we're talking about. How can we do things better and more effectively, given what we've got?
Thank you. Thank you.
District three, your turn.
Thank you. I've been patiently waiting. I have some questions related to the roles and duties of the graduation coaches because that's what our presentation was about. We can go back and forth and all day long and all night long until midnight on numbers because none of us can predict the future. So, getting back to the roles and duties. My question is related to the manpower and support and identifying whether or not what we have now is even working in the first place. Okay, so, going on with that. The roles of the graduation coach have changed dramatically due to the instructional focus period. And we saw from Union Grove presentation where it was very data-driven. And the person that they had in place was a data guru, very oriented on how to read data, how to interpret data, where to place students and stuff like that. So, my question is, are our graduation coaches where they need to be with interpreting and reading the data since this is very individualized placement? And if not, who is helping them?
Excellent question.
Shad Newton, hi. Our residential coach, she is a data analyst. She looks at it all the time. We have a leadership team that helps support her. She's already identified a cluster of students who need to get their tutoring, for example. So, yes, we have that going at our school.
Okay, so there's a support system in place, okay.
We began the school year based off of last year's data and the identification of students that were going to need services. We already knew which ones needed credit, but also the ones that needed tutoring because of previous EOCT or previous CRCT scores. But that is also fluid because as we began the school year, we'd just gotten this benchmark data back. We sat down today with our department chairs and said, here's what the data is. Now, we don't want to be completely reactionary and just, everybody that's failing, put them in tutoring. We want to identify. So, we came up with, again, with our department chairs and Ms. Gregory and myself. We're looking at three types of data that we want to look at. It's their current grade in the class, the teacher recommendation, as well as their benchmark data. Because we want to make sure that they're just not performing poorly on the test because they didn't try. That they're, they did well on the test, but the grade's really low because they're just not putting forth the motivation in the classroom. So, we talked about getting that criteria together. So, nothing's done in coordination. It's done in coordination so that we have a lot of heads thinking about it because none of our individual heads are.
Now, let me ask you something on the teacher recommendation. Is that an automatic procedure or is that where we have a student, we don't know where to quite place them based on the numbers that we got in for this particular student? So, let's go and seek out the teacher and see, is that how that is done, Ms. Gregory? Okay.
You're asking about teacher recommendation data?
No.
You wanted to raise a P.
No. Whether or not what you have in place is working, if your graduation coach is not data-driven or.
I'm sorry, I didn't respond because I was in agreement with what Mr. Lockhart.
Oh, okay.
No, that's okay, but since I'm here, I'll answer. I didn't respond, so I do apologize. I was in agreement with Dr. Lockhart and Mr. Turner, so I thought they answered the question fine. And, but I would like to say in regards to the benchmark data because that's something that we're just implementing now for the first time. I want to say that everyone is really taking the benchmark data very seriously, including parents. We're getting inquiries from parents via email and phone because they're looking at the data, the grades are in the system. And so, they're, you know, I do want to say we put parental involvement on the screen. And it's important to know that we don't forget that piece or lose that piece or lose sight of the fact that parents are involved. They are aware that we are benchmarking, and that's another piece that we're, you know, we use in regards to the placement of our students. But the work wouldn't, this would not work without the data pieces. That's important to know. If you were doing this blindly, it would not work at all. You have to infuse the data in order for it to work.
Okay. I got another question related to roles and duties and how you guys kind of decipher or prioritize students. How do you decide which one is priority? Let's say a student who typically needs an SAT or ACT review is probably going to be the same student who needs the end-of-course test review and the instructional focus and stuff. So, how do you, and I heard somebody say that the three, the child gets three opportunities to change.
Well, we have an advantage also going year-round. What we've been doing with SAT, ACT, we found out which administration of the test they signed up for. And so, we do them a two-week boot camp just before whichever one they've signed up for, whether it's the ACT or SAT. So, we streamline it for that one. As far as whether it's EOCT versus others, well, the EOCT's going to be at the end of the year. So, we'll probably start rolling that out more full-fledged starting November and January if we have those grades. The graduation test review that we've been doing so far, we have looked at those students that are seniors that are having to retake the test. And we're going ahead and putting them in. The catch is, you don't always get the scores back in time to see if they failed or passed for the next administration. So, you just kind of have to assume or go by the preliminary scores and customize that. The other thing that, I'm sure the other three schools will be doing after we get these nine-week grades, we'll start looking at failure rates and start putting kids in tutoring for the failure rates. And then, at the end of the semester, for next semester, we can put them in contracted credit recovery for those students that are failing to where they can go back and try to recover some of the grades to possibly end up passing by the end of the year. And then, credit recovery, we base that on the seniors. The seniors get first priority.
Okay.
And then, we go down from there.
Okay, so the kids can be pulled mid-mester?
Oh, yeah. They can come in and out. And, you know, I want to add, not one person can do this. We have a team. I have not only Ms. Etheridge working on, she maintains mainly the credit recovery, but I also have a teacher leader who does testing, that's a testing assistant. And she helps me with doing the instructional focus pullouts. I could not do it all by myself. She can't do it all by herself. It is not a one-person job.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Howard, I want to ask you a question, and correct me if I'm wrong. Is my understanding correct that in the county from which you came, you worked with IL, or am I wrong?
Yes, we had also explored the role and the model that they had. The interesting thing about Union Grove is they have been doing it for ten years. So, they had a very evolved program, and it was all very much structured and in place. The system I came from, we had researched them and started to implement it in a very limited way, like two days a week, because we were not ready to roll out in such a big way.
What is your impression of what's happening here in the first grading period?
Well, it's busy, it's busy. And I think we have big dreams, and we've bitten off a big piece, we've just got to catch up.
When do you guys think that we will know whether or not what we have in place is working?
I think it's too soon to really see whether it is. We'll have to look at the results, probably mid-semester, next semester.
Next, okay.
What are the students taking advantage of the seventh period? You know, like when I was going to high school, four schools ago, it didn't take advantage of it. Do we have a feel how they're doing, taking advantage of seventh period or fluffing it off? Any comments?
I think we have, most people are taking six classes in the academics at IL. There are a few students, just a very small number, who are taking a seventh class. Most of them are trying to do it through just our credit recovery piece that's there.
Did you mean, are they like checking out during that period or taking it not very seriously? Is that what you meant?
Just not going to class, not attending, not taking advantage of that extra hour.
Is that happening?
We've seen that our students, they appreciate that. They come up to various members saying, I need help, can you put me in a class? And so, we go and try and get some help. So, it's to our advantage answering theirs, and most of our students appear to be pretty interested, so.
And I would also like to add that our advanced placement population is growing. And that population of students are taking advantage of that time as well. Because remember, this isn't just a time for the student that needs remediation. It's also a time for the student that is on track and is selling, but still may need some extra help. An example is the AP lounges that we referred to earlier. So, that population of students is also taking advantage, and they're very motivated.
Has it grown a big percentage?
We've had a really large growth rate in our advanced placement classes, and the expectation has increased. We have, we have had quite a few students who, you know, aren't used to that level of rigor and have tried to get out of those classes. But with a conversation with the parent and the student informing and reminding them of the advantages of them being in the advanced placement classes, you know, motivates and encourages that student to stay. And the students are very honest. They'll say, well, I've never had to work this hard before. Or, and it's a good thing. So, that population of students is taking advantage of this time as well.
I've got one, one other item, and I just, this, again, with the compensation piece for these folks. One thing, I feel like these folks are assuming much the same role as a teacher in a sense. And we are giving them that pay. But I wish there was some way that we could recognize those folks when they get an advanced degree or when they get some other type of advancement that would be, as the normal teacher, it would be raising their salary some. You know, because when people work hard and they try to make it better for themselves and get the training, then this would be maybe a way of at least helping them feel like, okay, I'm not just totally doing this for just the work itself.
Is that what you were speaking to, Dr. Lockhart, also? Is that where you, because you brought salary up.
Yes, sir. He's just trying to make sure that we do compensate them based upon their degrees and their experience. And, and as everybody already mentioned, we fully understand that we are under budgetary constraints. However, when you look at the value that these individuals bring in, it was something where I just said, you know, I have to stand up for my staff. And I think I can take over that for the other principals as well.
All right. Thank you very much to our high school leadership team. I can, you can see why I'm very proud to work with them. We really do work as a united front and as a team and spend a lot of time talking and trying to get to the bottom of everything. So, I'm glad that you were able to see them in action tonight. And thank you very much for coming and leading the presentation tonight, participating in the development. Without further ado, I'm going to jump right into the enrollment report, if that's okay with you.
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Thanks, y'all, for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much for coming.
I learned a lot.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to tell me to jump into the enrollment report?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Our current enrollment is nineteen thousand two hundred and twelve students, compared to, at the same time last year, nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two students, which is a net loss of two hundred and eighty students.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, business on the item A, Dr. Proctor.
I have, I'm asleep right now.
Wake up, Doctor. See, you got to him yesterday. He's going to be very blunt from now on.
No, I told you, Dr. Proctor was honest.
Mr. Chairman, there have been no additions or changes to this policy as it was presented last month and has been on the table for thirty days. So, no changes or additions to it.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions, anybody? Okay, new business, item A, I believe.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, don't we have to?
We will vote on that next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, Dr. Proctor.
Yeah.
On the new business item A, I think you have item A, B, C, and D, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. In item A, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to CMC Lawn Maintenance of Covington, Georgia for the care and maintenance of school system grounds be renewed for an additional contract period. Effective date of renewal would be October twenty-sixth, twenty-eleven, with an expiration of October twenty-fifth, twenty-twelve. If you'll recall, this is the first full year that we've privatized or outsourced our grounds care. And we did that with True Green with our athletic fields and with CMC with our grounds for all of our schools. Since that time, CMC has been phenomenal. We've got nothing but rave reviews on their work. And the other entity, we've had to do some prodding, pushing along and trying to get them to view us as a primary client. And finally, we had to send them an official letter of demand saying, you must do A, B, C, or D if you expect a renewal. Well, that type of service was not rendered consistently, and thus, we're not requesting their renewal. So, we went to our attorneys and said, we have an outfit. And we went through our process in terms of how we did our grounds bid and how we did our athletics bid. And we had CMC who'd done a phenomenal job, and could we infuse the athletic part into that agreement? And that was blessed by those folks. And we went to them, and we said, the only way that can happen is if it comes in at an amount that's less than the current athletic fields agreement. And sure enough, that's what's happened, and that's our recommendation. Now, you do see there in the chart at the bottom that there is an increase for grounds. And that has to do with Flint Hill Elementary School. They worked with it from the time that the building has been turned over to us. But now that it's going to be a part of that contract, we've gone through the same acreage amount mode, amount of playground, landscape, and much, and that type of thing that we did with the original contract. And that increase of about twelve thousand dollars is due to the addition of Flint Hill Elementary School. But that's our recommendation, and we'd like to move forward with CMC.
Have you had any problems with them at all?
CMC, we have not had any trouble with them. They work very closely with us. They've kept us abreast each week of their schedule. They've stuck with the schedule when there have been testing situations going on with schools. And at the drop of a dime, we get a call from APs to modify that schedule. They've done so. They've been impressive, impressive.
I've seen them working, yeah.
They've done a good job.
Any other questions? Okay, item B.
Okay, and item B, if you remember, the Georgia Department of Education has gone from bus replacement funds to new bus funds. We did that last year with the purchase of six new buses. And now, those funds have come forward again this year, and they've given us monies to support the purchase of three new buses. And at this time, we like to purchase those buses as those funds require. And the total cost to the system will be eighty-six thousand dollars. And that relates to the expenditures beyond the cost, the amount given to us by the state. And of course, those funds are capital in nature, and they're in our capital, capital funds budget.
The eighty-six?
The eighty-six, four twenty-two, yes, sir. That's our cost. And for each bus from the state, we're receiving seventy-six thousand two hundred and nineteen bucks, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents.
What are we adding to go over the state recommendation?
Say that again, sir.
What are we adding to the bus?
Well, first of all, you're getting the bus. The seventy-six thousand doesn't even buy, doesn't even buy the bus. So, first, you're getting the bus, and you're getting those equipments and that we normally put on our bus as relates to the camera system and the hardware and that type of thing. If you notice, one of the buses, or two of the buses, I'm sorry, that we're purchasing are eighty-four passenger bus, buses. And this is a new endeavor for us. We've never purchased an eighty-four passenger. But in talking with our consultants and in doing some review with other districts, there's some opportunity with the purchase of eighty-four passenger bus versus splitting up two routes, just going from seventy-two to eighty-four keeps you from having to implement another bus route. And we got a couple instances right here out near the Flint Hill area that if we're able to do that, that would save us significant dollars there. So, that's a good thing. Costs us about twenty thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars more, if I'm not mistaken.
In the further discussion? If not, item C?
In item C, the superintendent recommends declaring the items on the tax surplus equipment form as no longer serviceable to the school system, authorizing the appropriate disposal of these items through a salvage company or other disposal methods, i.e. our GovDeals program that we utilize. And you'll see these items here coming from the BOE, Eastside High School, Fayetteville Elementary School, Middle Ridge, Newton County Theme School, and Fiquet, and Newton High School. And those items are there for your review.
Any questions? Item D?
Item D, this is a little bit of a change for us. You know about the Newton County. You know about the Newton County Community Breakfast that's sponsored by our Ministers Union? And that's generally held at Sharp, but that facility is not equipped or outfitted now to, to have that event. So we've been working with the president of that organization to hold this event at Thicwid. We've talked to the principal there, same situation that occurred at Sharp, it would just occur at Thicwid. And this is during the Thanksgiving holidays. If you recall, it's the day before and the day of Thanksgiving, and that's done by our local ministers alliance. And we're asking that the board waive those fees, as they've done in the past several, several years for that group.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Item E, uh, and F, and G, is, uh, Dr. Proctor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, item E is a revision to your policy JAA. Upon consultation with legal counsel, it's been determined that this policy needs revision. You can look at the policy that follows the, the board memo to you. And the first change you'll see there is the recommendation that we change it from the title, from non-discrimination to equal educational opportunity. Other than that, the major difference, without reading the entire thing to you, which you obviously can do, is the inclusion of complaint procedure. Our previous policy of non-discrimination did not allow for, or spell out a procedure for complaints to be filed. So that is the primary difference in this policy. You can see that the complaint procedure, as, um, given to us by our attorney, is quite, um, extensive and very clear for those who wish to file complaints based on equal educational opportunities.
Any questions? Item F?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, your policy JCAA, which deals with, um, harassment. And this is a new policy that's being added to your list of policies as, um, as recommended to us by legal counsel again. Herefore, we've not had a policy that has dealt with harassment, um, peer-to-peer, student-to-student harassment, or Newton County Board employee-on-student harassment. Our only harassment policy has been under the section of your policies that deal with employees, when an employee is being harassed. So this is a new policy that we are, are adding to the slate. And you can read there, um, the, the policy and how that would be played out procedurally in our schools when there is, um, student harassment, on-student harassment, or employee-to-student harassment, either sexual harassment or any other type of harassment.
Okay, item G, any questions on, uh, item F? Okay, item G.
Okay, item G is, um, actually is a two-part item, wherein we would be rescinding JCD-A, which is our current policy on bullying. Uh, there's a new state law and legislation that's gone into effect that required us to basically revamp this entire item. So upon, uh, counsel with our legal, um, folks, they have suggested that we completely revise and rescind the one that we have, and replace it with JCD-A-G, which includes the new definition of bullying and the procedures that, uh, must be enacted when bullying takes place in our schools. I might go ahead and let you know that this has already been changed in our student handbooks for this year, but we're a little bit behind in updating our policy procedures. So it's already in policy, it's already in our student handbooks, but this is just the finalization of it in your board policy.
Okay, any questions?
Did that come out of a Senate bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Proctor. Item H is, uh, uh, Dr. Shaddit?
Dr. Matthews, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Item H deals with the state rule that prohibits personal communication devices in classrooms during instructional time. There's a big movement throughout the United States of allowing, uh, teachers and students to bring their own personal devices into schools. And it's been, uh, adopted in many districts in Georgia and throughout the country. But there is this state rule that we have to get a waiver from if we want to continue to pursue this. The waiver's being requested in order to leverage the personal technologies of students in conjunction with district-provided devices to support the use of technology to increase student achievement. A majority of students already have these devices while at school. As result, as a result, Newton County wants to make positive use of these personal own devices in order to enhance a teacher's utilization of technology in an effort to engage these students in their own learning. Attached to this, um, board item is a sample letter that Dr. Matthews can send to the state, uh, superintendent, and also a, um, resolution that the board would have to vote on to accept the resolution in order to send this letter to the State Department requesting this waiver.
Any questions? Okay, have a, thank you, Dr. Shaddit.
Thank you.
Item I, uh, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, board members, at this time, we'll request that the board approve all personnel items as outlined on behalf of Dr. Matthews, our superintendent during executive session.
Can I get a motion to approve said items presented during executive session? It's Dr. uh, uh, motion by Mr. Matters, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries. Any other matters of interest that the board, uh, wish to discuss at this time?
I wanna ask a question on H. I should've asked it while Dr. Proctor was up there, you don't need to get back up, but, I guess, oh, Dr. Shaddit, you did that. I guess the only building-level administrator, unless I miss this guy, is Mr. Cher. Do you see a problem with that with the electronic device as a AP in the high school?
Uh, well, we still would wanna, for Eastside, we'd still wanna enforce that the teacher has the discretion, uh, because we do have the, um, the closed network in our building. And, and there are certain students that if they get the waiver, um, released from their parents, and they check in their device from the media center, uh, then, and if the teacher allows them to use it during class period, as long as it's not a disruption and it's appropriate for the class, then we've been kind of field testing that last year, and it hasn't been a problem for us. In fact, we've had more success stories of students being able to access creative, because they think differently.
So I guess what I'm asking is, i- if it, if this waiver is granted and it's passed, is there autonomy within the school to make some adjustment?
According to our board policy, IFBG, uh, the principal has to agree that this be adapt, adopted in their school. And then it gives the teacher the authorization to either permit it in their classroom or not permit it in their classroom. And so far, all three high schools have, uh, adopted this initiative in their schools and are allowing personal devices. We have several middle schools and a half dozen elementary schools.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We have some reminders here. We have on October the fourteenth, Alcoa at Dutch Town, Eastside at Stock, uh, Stockbridge Homecoming, Newton at Martha Luther King in Panthersville. October the twenty-first is Alcoa versus Woodland, and, uh, Eastside is open. Uh, October the twenty-second, Newton versus Westlake at seven P.M. October the twenty-ninth, uh, Alcoa is open, and Eastside versus Eagle Landing, and Newton's at Huge. November the fourth, Eastside is at Henry, and Newton versus Luella. Anything else anybody want to discuss? If not, I need a motion for us to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Matters, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker, all in favor, aye. We stand adjourned.